All right, I opened up the Board of School Directors meeting on May 31st for the Montpelier-Roxbury School Board. A couple of quick announcements at the beginning. Libby is juggling some family stuff, so she's unable to be here, although she did say she's on call, but I think we can hopefully avoid having to call her. Anna unfortunately was not able to get into the C-13 document on homeless students, so I don't think any board member has that, so we can kick the reading on that back. Another meeting.
I have access to that.
That's the policy monitoring?
No, it's student error laws. I mean, we can have the reading if you want to send it around right now to everyone.
Yeah, I made it accessible to all to view, so I don't know if the link, let me just check the link on the... Oh, it wasn't put on to the...
Yeah, and Anna just sent me an email before this saying she was not able to get a copy.
Okay, yeah, let me, I'll send it.
The other thing I want to state is that this is Merrick and Zach's last meeting as student representatives. They will be graduates of Montpelier High School by the time we meet next. So I just want to congratulate them on that and thank them for their service. It was great to have both of them serve. They served very thoughtfully and really contributed to a lot of important discussions over the year and brought some great perspectives to the board and really helped connect us, I think, with student concerns. And it was also just great after COVID to get students back on the board, we had a little high hate us. And Merrick and Zach, I think, brought it back robustly. And again, thank you very much, and Anna will get in touch with you with some small parting gifts as a thank you. But again, thanks for all you've done. Really, really appreciate it. And of course, you are always invited to come to board meetings whenever you want to. And I'm sure that Miriam and Alara, who are excited to have on for next time, will appreciate your offer to be able to reach out to them with questions. So public comment is next. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to give feedback to the board. It's a listening session only for the board, but it's very important even though we don't respond in real time. We certainly take into consideration, we try to do research and find out about problems and issues that are brought to us. And certainly, you know, if there are direct problems we try to, that we can address, we try to address them. And they certainly inform our thinking about priorities and needs in the district. So it's very important even if we are not actively engaging with you at the time. And we also acknowledge that, you know, that the issues that come to us before are very important and that speaking before a board can feel intimidating even though we're not a terribly intimidating bunch. So appreciate all of the public discussions. We have a few people in the audience. I don't know if anyone is here for public comment. If so, please go ahead and come up to the desk and introduce yourself. Otherwise, we'll see if there's anyone on the virtual screen who is interested in public comment. No in the room? Anyone online? And please, you can either raise your hand with the raise hand function in reactions or you can come off camera and wave at us and we'll see you. All right, no public comment? Thank you. So next, onto the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion about any items on the consent agenda?
I just wanted to note that the two board retreats, the one on the 14th of July and the one on the 10th of August, I believe, they're not at 6:30 to 8:30. So Anna, could you make a note that those are from 8:00 AM to noon when we finalize it? Or, you know, once it's like up on the website? And then just a reminder for board members and then also members of the public that our next meeting, the one on June 14th, is the last evening board meeting until we meet again in the evenings on August 16th. So we'll have those two retreats in between there, but no other evening meetings as a whole board.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I think for noticing the times. Any other comments? Do we need to...
Have a vote.
Well, I'm wondering, do we need to amend the thing to approve the consent agenda with the changes to the times?
I don't think so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Board learning focus, so student presentation on MSMS sustainability. It looks like we've got some students here, so please come up and take it away. We're really excited. And if you need any technology assistance...
Hi, I'm Merrick.
What's the best, we have a presentation that we're gonna do.
Whatever is best for you. If you guys want to sit down and do it, if you want to do it standing up.
What's best, what do you guys want to do?
I'm gonna log into the meeting now.
I'd rather stand.
Yeah, and I think Anna, it looks like she's on it, it's kind of giving the presentation.
I'm doing that.
Sure.
Okay.
Where are we going?
We'll just sit around here. So good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. My name is Don Taylor and I teach sustainability at Main Street Middle School. And our program is called MSMS Sustain. And one of our missions is to communicate what we're doing on a regular basis. So this is our first time at the school board and we appreciate your listening. We do have some students. We also have our program assistant Drew McNaughton. And I'm just gonna let each of them introduce themselves before we get going here. Drew?
Oh, Drew McNaughton. I'm the enrichment coordinator here at Montpelier-Roxbury Middle Schools. And over the last couple of years, I've been watching the growth of the sustainability program and wanted to find a way to get my hands into it. And luckily, last year I was able to get, take on a role within the program. And this year, embed myself further into the program during the school day while maintaining the after-school programming that I do as well. And it's been a pretty amazing experience.
Hi, my name is Aborji. I'm an eighth grader at MSMS.
My name is Audrey Childs. I'm also an eighth grader at MSMS.
My name is Adele Pritchard. I am also an eighth grader at MSMS.
So again, thank you very much for having us. So this story kind of started three years ago in January, I think, of 2021 when we were in our pod year. Our eighth graders and Merrick have all been deeply impacted by the pandemic. And they were looking for a hands-on learning opportunity. I had done some environmental work in my humanities class, and that led to the creation of this program. So if you look up on the slide, our mission statement, this was created by our youth partners, is to work together to create youth-adult partnerships educating the community within a diverse and positive learning space. We strive to resolve social, economic, and environmental issues. Next, please. Good. So in year one, what we did is I signed up with Shelburne Farms. They have a program called Cultivating Pathways to Sustainability. And I also started working with Up For Learning. Up For Learning emphasizes the growth of youth partnerships where you're building partnerships and relationships with students and they're accepting more responsibility and they're transitioning into leaders, not only in your classroom but in the school community. So our mission was to create an engaging sustainability program at school for students to learn, educate others about sustainability-related issues, and to make a difference in our community by using voice, skills, and vision. And one of the impetuses behind this program was that students were coming out of these pods, they were coming out of the pandemic, and they really wanted some engaging hands-on learning. Next, please. So that was year one. That was from January to June, I think, of 2021. 2021, 2022 was our first full year as a program. Next slide, please. So we had a steering committee in 2021, 22, so we had six to 10 kids who were interested in the program. We met once a week, and they had gone through the Cultivating Pathways to Sustainability program with me. They were giving us input and advice about the direction of the program. And out of that came our, we have a leadership group. All three of these students are on that leadership group. And now that leadership and the leadership group have taken on a more important role in driving and helping build our programming and giving us youth partner voice and input throughout the year. Next slide, please. So this is our first, sorry, our second full year. Next slide, please.
Just really appreciating the alligator.
Oh, yeah. So what we did is we created a framework for learning. And the framework is pretty simple. It's to educate kids about sustainability issues in the school and the classroom. It's to act on what we learn by connecting with local and community organizations. And then, as I mentioned at the outset, it's to communicate what we're doing, both to the community, to the school, and to our partners to show what we're doing in the hopes of creating a sustainability movement, which we hope will confront social justice issues, issues of climate change, and issues of equity that occur throughout our communities, our state, and our nation. Next slide, please. So to do that, this is kind of teacher speak. The education piece, the foundations that we teach kids about, we teach them about sustainability. We use the UN SDGs as a framework for learning. We talk about expectations. We review concepts, definitions. We're using a lot of personalized learning and the personal learning plan so that kids can capture their growth. We look at climate change issues. And down in the bottom right corner, you see the three spheres of sustainability, which is a key component of our program. Those spheres are economics, environment, and equity. And so we try and look at our projects through those lenses so that we can ensure that we're hitting all of those and making sure our students understand how those relate to the key concepts. Next slide, please. So again, working together really to solve climate change. When I first started teaching the sustainability, we were looking at climate change. And it's really a doom and gloom story. It's hard to get around the data. It's hard to get kids enthusiastic when you're really overwhelmed by the data, which, you know, the facts are there and it's really unsettling. And so what we're trying to do is take a more positive outlook, see what we can do, how we can take action. And you see, these are just some examples. Create less waste, buy local seasonal foods, volunteer, and make our voices heard. Those things we can do. Next, please. And really, what we're doing is trying to create a sustainability movement. So we're not fighting climate change. We're not, you know, I don't like that aggressive language. What we're trying to do is come together and build a sustainability movement in our classroom that will give these kids the leadership skills and the understanding so that they can move out into their life and their world and make a difference. Next slide, please.
Our school uses, our sustainability program uses project-based learning to make the sustainability class more engaging and to enhance our students' learning. Some of the projects that we do are cooking for the community. We bake a lot of bread through King Arthur Baking Company. And we make a lot of different foods, some of which we get our food from, like food that's going to be composted from the kitchens that wasn't used or food that we got from local farms or local orchards. And we take it in our sustainability classes. The kids learn how to make different kinds of foods and learn different skills in the kitchens. And we also donate a lot of that food to Just Basics, the local food pantry, and to other food churros and food pantries. And we have also, in the bottom left corner, there's a picture of students tapping trees on the edge of Hubbard Park. And we also have started a community garden at our school. And with another community partner has let us use some of their land to start a garden that we also use in some of our cooking. Next slide, please. So, yeah, cooking for the community. Our students in the class do a lot of cooking. And we get food through gleaning and through different farms and orchards. And we prepare it into different kinds of meals. And we package it up and take it to Just Basics or to other, like food pantries or food churros. Next slide. This helps us trying to reduce food insecurities.
Okay, this is some of our donation and volunteer work. We volunteer at Just Basics and at other places in our town that are community buildings. And we, as Adele was talking about, we donate most of the food we make to our volunteering places. And at Just Basics, there is other, like, personal care items and things that someone might need. You can go to the next slide. We have had a fiber arts unit throughout our grades. And we work with a community partner, Kate Cameretti, who has helped us learn about these, like, darning and mending wool and out-of-favor clothing items that were donated through the community to our school. And we used a wool drive that I and one of my fellow peers put on to give back and repair items for the community. And this is all to help with fast fashion and reduce the waste from clothing.
So we have a maple sugaring program at the middle school. So sometimes in your classes, when it's your turn to have the sustainability class, through a community partner, we have some maple trees that are adjacent to Hubbard Park. So we'll hike up there and we'll tap the trees. And so using that maple syrup and sap, we gathered about 15 gallons total of syrup this year, not sap. And we boil all the sap down, and then we package it up. And so our labeling committee made these really fun labels, and so we'll label all the bottles. And then we have this online store where we'll sell maple syrup. And so a third of the proceeds go to the food pantry, Just Basics, that Adele was talking about earlier. A third goes into MRPS Pie to help support our community here at MRPS. And then another third goes back into our program to make sure that we can keep on doing things like this in the future. Next slide, please. Yeah, and so this helps with climate because we are using natural and local resources to make our place better and sell things locally rather than get them imported from far away. And it helps with folk life because we are using community partners and accessing places in our community. Next slide, please.
The community gardens piece, we put in six raised beds at the middle school out behind the school, kind of behind the cafeteria. So there's six raised beds right in a row, and those we planted last year. We put in pollinators on one end, we put in herbs, we put in veggies. And this year, we're focusing on differentiating the beds down. And in future years, what we want to do is thematic bed setups. So there'll be herbs and savouries and then indigenous plants, like, so teaching gardens. And they've been really successful and untrammelled, which is incredible at a middle school. And I think that's because of student buy-in, because we try, all the kids are rotating through and have been incredible workhorses in that garden. We just put in potatoes today. There's a bunch of onions and garlic. And last year, we actually had community partners' parents in the community. We made a little video about how to water the garden, and we said, oh, I hope we get sign-ups for this to happen. And within like an hour, all the slots were filled for the whole summer of parents signing up to volunteer, which is really great. And that led to another community partner volunteering some land that was mentioned earlier for us to go out and garden. So there's this triangle of backyard that's as big as the opening in these tables is now planted and weeded and mulched. And it's gonna be growing, you know, squash corn beans and a bunch of other things for our program. And if it gets used in the kitchen to donate, that's great. If kids get their hands dirty and learn how food grows and get connected to it, great. And the fact that they're going out and interfacing with the public in these ways pretty daily is pretty incredible. So, next one? So, yeah, so pollinators, local agriculture. As I said, like, we've made some mason beehives in the woodshop last year when there was a woodshop at the middle school. And we're going to, you know, continue pushing pollinator species in all of our garden setups around the school. And kind of increasing community awareness around pollinators. One idea was a pollinator pathway along the bike path, and some other things have been mentioned. So, go ahead. I don't know if this next one's mine or not. Yeah. Oh, the other thing we do is phenology. So phenology is a study of seasonal change. And seasonal change seems to be changing. So seasons seem to be coming at different times than we're used to. So instead of just saying, back when I was a kid, we're walking with students. We do community walks and we take notes on what's happening in the environment around us. So we have touchstone species that we look at, a certain tree, a certain patch of ground, a certain, you know, section of the river. And we say, what are the changes that are happening here? What are the changes that are happening here? And kids get enculturated to it, so that weekly, kids start to notice, oh, the lilacs are really like, they're really starting to leaf out, or there's a bud burst, or I saw a flying insect for the first time this March. So those types of things, and we notate that with students. So we'll have longitudinal data that they'll be part of, and they'll have like visceral response to that will indicate different seasonal changes. And to just note that that's how information's gathered. It's by people looking and seeing and understanding and touching and knowing. So that's been good. And the sugaring operation also does that. Mapping all the sugar bush, we have all the trees marked and mapped up in Chris Hammer's land on Course Street. And in the future, we're gonna get the aspect of where we tapped. Are we tapping the southwest side or tapping the northwest side of the tree? And how much yield every time we go up is gonna give real data. And it'll give, you know, quixotic data because sugar operations that are large-scale don't quite understand it yet. So what are, you know, but I think just being a part of that process is gonna be important. I think you can go ahead. So, yeah, climate data, as I was indicating. Just the kids being connected to that data and not having it come from some nationalized source that they're disconnected from.
Our leadership group has partnered with Up For Learning and specifically with Katie Ingram. I think I pronounced it the wrong way. And we have gone to, I think, three retreats so far this year with mostly the entire group of, like, SST group. And we got to learn about different leadership skills. And we got to reflect on what work we do in our group and make plans, like, learn how to make plans for future. And our most recent one was with some newer students who we want to recruit in to our group for next year once most of our eighth graders leave, because eighth graders are the majority of our group. And they got to look at all of the different committees we have inside of our group that they could work on or they could come up with a completely new idea to work on. Because in our group, we do a lot of, like, personalized learning. So if there's something that you're really passionate about and you really want to work on, you can work on that. And there's like a ton of different groups that you can work on. I think we're gonna talk about those a bit later. And so we have some kids who are working on developing a leadership, whole, like, leadership curriculum for next year and like different activities that we can do to give kids leadership planning, which helps with public speaking and confidence when talking to big groups, and lots of different skills in life that they will definitely use even if they don't actually know that they're using them. Next slide.
Okay, so some of the things that we've done this year as a leadership group is that, so if you all were here in December and you remember going to the Unitarian Church around Summer 10th, there was the Solitary Craft Fair. We helped support that. And so we made a bunch of food that could be brought there and then sold for lunch, which was awesome. We also have done staff lunches, luncheons at the middle school. So if it was a professional development day, you could come down to the sustainability room and get a nice homemade lunch. And all the teachers really seemed to like it. Like Adele just said, we have done some leadership training and planning and developed a curriculum so that next year, students can learn more about our skills. We have also done a personal items drive. And there was a food drive that ended yesterday, so hopefully we got some stuff for that. We can then go donate to the Goods to Marion Haven or Just Basics to make sure that people in our community can get help that they need. We have also done, as part of outreach, is quarterly newsletters. So every quarter, students write articles and then we format them into an online newsletter. And so we should be saying our new one out here probably in about a week, if not less. And so you can scroll through and click the articles and learn and read about what's happening in our classes. Next slide, please.
This is our C-13 sort of metaphor for youth-adult partnerships. And you can see the growth between how much adults are helping our youth and our students in their community and through growth with the student, I guess, they can get to be full partners. You can see in this, in this large tree, it's the youth and adult as full partners instead of youth-adult as emerging partners or youth as consultants and youth as recipients. So with this, it's sort of like your younger years or honestly, us as well. The adults sometimes talk at us and not with us. So this is where we're reaching for in our community and in our sustainability and leadership group to bring a community together as partners instead of adults talking at us and not getting our opinions.
So the MSMS Sustain 201 class started out as a course class, and then our teacher had to leave partway through the year. And we were going to just be put into a study hall. But Mr. Taylor and Drew thought that we had like more potential for a study hall than just kids sitting around doing basically nothing and talking to their friends. And they were right. And so they took our class and converted it into our Sustain 201 class. And we're kind of like an extension Sustain class. So we meet just during our regular course times. And we have worked on a ton of different projects. Like Opal touched on earlier, we had this food drive that ended yesterday. And we've done a bit of cooking and people have done separate projects. Some people organized a field day, I believe, for the end of the year. We organized a meeting with, at the senior center in Montpelier where, like, good, what, seven kids maybe?
More than seven. I think it was around 10. And we had a coffee and conversation with them. So we joined them during their usual meeting time. And with the help of Sarah Lipton, we got to share our knowledge and they got to share their knowledge. And we talked about sustainability and how we could give back more to the community and do better even though we've tried to go so far. And they really gave us some, they enlightened us on their perspective of... And they really gave us some, they enlightened us on their perspective of the community and what could be improved.
Yeah, it was definitely very interesting to see how things were then, how things were now and how we hope how we hope for things to be in the future. It was interesting to see like the change between all of those things and like to talk about the different opportunities that we have as like different ages, living in different generations. It was very interesting and I really enjoyed it. And we're going to try and continue it, maybe do one more this year and then continue it next year as well. Because it was a really fun program.
So a lot of what you've heard about is the action where we've had kids doing and with project-based learning. And none of this would be possible without our community partners. And so Central Vermont Solid Waste Management, they've been instrumental in helping us with a reuse, recycle, reduce, reuse and recycle program for fifth graders. Up For Learning, as you just heard about, has coached us and coached me on developing a leadership curriculum program where we're building youth partners. And I'll thank them repeatedly, but our students here are our most important asset. And to hear them be able to carry off these kind of presentations is fantastic. And they're sort of our most important voice. We've also partnered with King Arthur. They have a Bake Learn and Share program. And then we've partnered with Vermont Evaporator. And all these organizations share our passion for good community work. And we also link, we're not just baking bread. We're baking bread and we're donating Just Basics because there's a food insecurity issue in Vermont that's about to get a lot worse in the next couple of months. Just Basics saw a doubling in the number of people visiting their food pantry in 2022. Inflation, job insecurity, housing issues, those are all contributing to what we're seeing at the local level. And when we take kids over there to either volunteer or to drop off what we're making, those are all teaching moments. And we're reading, we're researching, we're writing about and reflecting on these things so that we understand how our actions are addressing issues that are happening in the real world. Next slide, please. So as you've probably heard, Just Basics has been instrumental. If you go to their website and read their mission statement, they're a social justice organization and they've been absolutely fantastic. And they've allowed us to bring our students over there. They're looking at our products. They're giving us ideas. And we're taking those ideas and putting them into our curriculum. So one idea that I go back to a lot is, you know, we're saying, oh, we're going to make, you know, this or that. And they said, you know what we really need is single-serving meals that can be microwaveable. Because there's a ton of folks out there who don't have access to a kitchen and need something grab and go. So we decided, hey, let's start making burritos. So we got 170 pounds of butternut squash from the Feast Farm. We started making butternut black bean burritos. We have lots of carrots that we're getting from Community Harvest of Central Vermont. So we're making carrot, bean and rice burritos. We're packaging that up. We just delivered 105 burritos over the last two weeks to the Good Samaritan Haven. They're a new partner for us and I drive that food right over there. And they've been very gracious about accepting that. And again, they have some serious issues with people who are struggling with big, big challenges. One of those obviously is getting enough to eat and we're there to kind of, to help them. And the kids know that. They learned about it. We've been to all these websites. We've learned all about their missions. And then the kids are able to kind of take it with the leadership and really make a difference. So I just also want to say about Community Harvest of Central Vermont, they're another fantastic organization. They focus on gleaning, recapturing food. They have a ton of resources. They took us on a gleaning field trip where we made, I think we captured 2,100 pounds of apples. And they store it for us. And then if we need some of that, we can get it. Otherwise, they'll donate it and use that. So again, our kids were out there. After the orchards at Vermont Technical College had closed down for the picking season, we went out there. We got a ton of apples. We took a tour of Vermont Technical College. We learned about their sustainability programs. So it's all connected, right? It's that environment, equity and economics. The other thing we've had, we've worked with Teens Reaching Youth and the Vermont UVM 4H Extension Program for more than 10 years. And we've, again, brought those into our program where we have kids learning about a specific climate or science issue and then going over to Union Elementary School and teaching that. Another way of developing leadership skills, another way of seeing how kids, their own actions can make a huge difference in our very local community.
I gotta just say something about that program, that Teens Reaching Youth program. Like when I, when we talk about that being a leadership module, students come back from that and they say, okay, so what was going on in that back corner? Why weren't we engaging those students? They're talking about differentiated instruction. They're talking about such high-level educational processes and tactics and new ideas that teachers don't think of because they're not close to their students' age the same way that these kids are. And it's 98% self-directed curriculum. So these students are getting a packaged curriculum, taking it and saying, oh, how are we going to do this and modify this? And then they just have to go and do it. And they're getting over there. They're doing it. They're following a schedule. They're turning in documentation. They're turning in, you know, data on this, on what they've been teaching. And we're doing reflection on it. It's, it's, it's a really amazing program.
I think it creates a lot of empathy for us too, right? Because they go teach, like, man, that class went sideways. And then we can say, see what I mean? And you can see him in the classroom being like, oh, I get it now. So it also creates empathy. Next slide, please.
So part of our outreach and communication, we have, as I talked about earlier, our quarterly newsletter, which you all can read our first three newsletters, which is up on our website.
I think the fourth one got published today.
It did?
Yes.
That's great. Okay. Well, we're not there tomorrow, so it might not happen. You can also check us out on Instagram. We have a whole page where we post videos of us cooking, us zoning and like things that might be happening in the class. Or like updates on one, you can view our newsletter or check out our new podcast episode where you can find us on YouTube. Don't forget to like and subscribe. And so we post videos about our mission statement, some of our programs and like where you can find us. And hopefully next year, there will be more about some issues in our community that people can help address and things that they can do at home to help spread awareness or be more of a help to the community. Next slide, please.
So, yeah, so by the numbers, like when you look at like what have, what have you really done? So every student in the school goes through a quarter of sustainability through our program, grades five through eight. And it's a tough schedule a little bit because, you know, you just get rolling with these kids and they just get, you know, in the rhythm of things and then you get a whole new group. But you get to see all of them, which is great. So we've done almost 600 meals and we packageded that number out based on, it's over that now, actually. But based on like what would be a centerpiece aside and then some bread would be a meal, right? And we've made, again, like Opal said, we did 15 gallons maple syrup. We've had four leadership retreats and those leadership retreats are, Up For Learning comes in and partners with our students. And it's mostly student-directed leadership retreats for their peers. So it's leadership training from within that, like Dawn and I sit on the outside of or sit in as participants as equal members. It's really cool. Tons of apples, like we said. That was one morning. And then they've done those drives. And the difference with our program is that when we do drives, they're not going to be a one-off. They're not going to be a, oh, I did a, I, look, winter clothing, great, next thing. And we're gonna, it's gonna be ritualized so that they're yearly activities. They become cultural touchpoints. They've created those newsletters. So we meet every single day with these students during their SST time for half an hour. And they walk in the room and the amount they accomplish in half an hour blows my mind every day. And they sit right down and they get to work. And they come in with a mission. They come in with purpose. And so when the newsletter's coming out, they're editing, they're peer reviewing, they're sending things around. They're prompting each other to get on top of it. And they're embedding photographs, making these really beautiful, you know, informational pieces. The tri-teams, again, they meet during that SST time as well. And kids are coming and popping out of class so that they can go teach at Union. And they have to make up that work that they missed in that class. So they're doing it at this cost. And I think that the benefit that they're, you know, gleaning from it is just so intrinsic that it motivates, you know, them to continue. So the new group that we have coming in, the new prospective leadership committee crew is really excited about that tri-program. I mean, I think just from what they've heard other students talk about.
And so just in closing, I think it's really important. You look at these numbers and what they're really doing is helping us set goals for next year. So that you heard, we have 21 new recruits coming in for our leadership group for next year. And that's in addition to the four classes that we run, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And when we have numbers like this, thanks to, these are our original members, our original leadership team members and our youth partners who have been with us from the start, we can say, this is where our program started. This is what we did last year. What are we going to accomplish this year? And that ability to set goals, to reflect on those goals, allows us to sort of build out our program. And as we're building out our program, I'm starting to level up on what we're doing in terms of reading, in the communication skills, in all the sort of academic areas that kids are going to need to make sure that when they're going out to teach other kids, they have the tools and that those tools will then transfer into leadership positions connecting with the community. And eventually you'll see them here at the high school, such as Merrick, who's actually a former student of mine. Again, congratulations on your upcoming graduation. That's awesome. So we just want to thank you very much. We wanted to let you know what's happening in the classroom in our program. If you have any questions, let us know. But thanks for all the work that you're doing and thanks for having us this evening. And especially, I'd like to thank our students for showing up tonight. That's a big, a big deal to me. Thank you very much.
So thank you. That was awesome. This is really exciting work you're doing. And the presentation was fantastic. Questions for students or Dawn or Drew?
I have a just like, kind of silly question for the students. Is this your favorite class?
The community that we've built in that class is just so amazing.
We get the most freedom and creative freedom, which I love because you can really work on what you want within boundaries, of course. But you can choose your interests and create a project out of that and really help your community and do something incredible.
And it's not just the projects. It's also the people. We've built such like an amazing community. Everybody is not necessarily best friends with each other, but everybody's friendly with each other. Everybody is always helping each other out. You always know that like if everybody's working on something, there's always somebody who can pause what they're doing to help you with whatever you need. There's always like somebody there and there's always like people to talk to. It's always fun. It's always super light, but you're still getting a ton done. So definitely our favorites.
And it's not all just work. You're still, you get to socialize and of course, there's like, sometimes after a class has came in and they've cooked, we go back and we clean and then we get the food they made. So that's a plus. But, yeah.
Yeah, and I agree with all that. Like today I was having like a kind of off day. I was like, woo! And I came in and I was just like, okay, I'm safe. It's all good. And then I walked out and I hailed the rest of the day. Great. I'm like, this, these are the people. Like, it's a home there.
Gives you a reboot during the day because it's right in the middle.
Like before lunch too, so everybody's always a bit hangry.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good evening and if I don't see you, enjoy your summer. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for sharing your work with us.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Good night.
So Jess.
Hey Jess.
Youth Adult Partnerships.
Yeah, I get to follow that.
Yeah.
I did try to have students here. I got a few takers, but then they had more exciting events come up. So I apologize. I don't have students to talk about student adult partnerships. That certainly feels a little weird, but I'm excited for all of the wonderful events that those folks are doing tonight. And also I'm Jess Murray. Hi, everyone. I'm the Director of Social, Mental, Learning and Wellness here at MRPS. So, yeah, I'm going to talk about youth adult partnerships. I'll just put the caveat that this is sort of the more formal version of youth adult partnerships that are happening at MRPS. There, as we've just seen, so many different examples that are happening, both informally and formally. So I just want to recognize that I'm certainly not hitting all of them. Next, please. So just some goals for tonight's presentation. I really want to share some actions of youth adult partnerships. The ones that I'll focus on really focused on positive and safe climate for each and every student. Those partnerships were really excited and really dove into that lens of youth adult partnerships. So that'll be the primary focus for tonight. And then, of course, previewing next steps around what this will look like in the future and how we continue to grow these partnerships. Next, please. So as they were talking about, one of the main pillars is Up For Learning. They have been fantastic in starting and helping to grow youth adult partnerships. Jackie is the person that this group works really hard with. And so what that looks like at MSMS is folks meet with her on a regular basis with an adult partner. And what they've done this year is they did a climate survey in October. They really wanted to focus on climate and what that looks like and how students were experiencing the middle school. They collected a bunch of quantitative data and then really wanted to dig in a little bit more around like, what's the story behind that data, what do students actually experience? So they went into TA and held discussions with kids and focus groups and really like dug into what is the student perspective and experience coming here every day to the building and being a Gator. I also love the Gators. When they reviewed the data, there were really like three things that stood out of interest to them around student connections and how students feel connected to adults in the building. The second one, feelings of respect. And they found some themes around student-to-student respect and teacher-to-student respect. And want to dive in a little bit further to those. And then how students feel like they have a voice in MSMS and what input they feel like they have into their school community. Based on those three areas that they really wanted to dive into, they started recently making an action plan and a brainstorm for next year so we can just get started at the beginning of the year. So one of the things that they really want to focus on is highlighting student strategies. They feel like, you know, there are so many teachers who, as we know, right, are creating safe, positive learning environments in that space. So how can we amplify the strategies that they're using that are really working well for students in that building? So how can we share teacher strategies that are working with other teachers to help them for their leverage? And also, which I thought was really insightful, figuring out what is the administrator role in youth adult partnerships, right? I think that there needs to be this balance of respecting student space and student voice and as an administrator, as an authority figure coming into that space. And how can you facilitate that work, make it easier for them and also not dominate that space? So doing some work around that next year, I think is going to be really important and powerful. This year, they also work to recruit a wider representation of students in the building. So they have done a great job of recruiting some sixth graders and are really working to make sure that they can have fifth graders next year as well. Next, please. Thank you. At MHS, they have worked pretty hard developing a mission statement. So really digging into the why behind their work, really what is the purpose of their sort of practice Up For Learning group at the high school. They have really solidified around practicing conflict resolution and how to create a system of peer mediation and harm repair circles and thinking really deliberately about how do we infuse our sort of practices into the discipline system at MHS. They visited another school just last week to look at what this looks like at another school. And they've continued to develop some community building circles for TA. And additionally, they really started to build up the work to push into MSMS. Unfortunately, we just like ran out of time at the end of the school year. They have created some great structures to visit MSMS at the end of, you know, the eighth graders' years to help think about how do we welcome eighth graders into the MHS community in a way that feels like really intentional and good and so that they know what to expect when they get here. when they get here. Some Up For Learning next steps is really thinking about how do we get started earlier in the year, especially at MSMS. When I was talking to Jackie and some folks about their experiences this year, they felt like they spent a lot of time collecting data and would really like to think about, of course, data collection is important, and what do you do with that data collection and how you get into like action mode a little bit earlier as you're, you know, helping to figure out what you want to do with that year? And again, clarifying the administrator role, how do we have that balance between adult facilitation and authentic student voice and authentic student partnership? There, at MHS, they're really interested in leveraging some community involvement. The Community Justice Center is a spot that they are really interested in working with to again, think about how do we develop those restorative systems in MHS and how do we work on peer mediated resolutions? Again, thinking about fifth graders and actually, I happened to be there during this beautiful conversation with the MHS students about, you know, how they want to work through peer mediation and how they want to think about more about conflict resolution, what that looks like. And then them realizing, well, we don't actually have a lot of experience ourselves with this, so how do we tap into perspectives of people who are impacted, who are vulnerable to the discipline system? And how do we get their voices so that we're not just like folks who haven't had that experience making decisions for other people? And then, of course, thinking about how do we align those two groups that are doing very similar work? And thinking about how do we create a pipeline of student leadership? So that way, we constantly have folks who are ready and want to engage in this work. Oh, next, sorry, thank you. So something I am really excited to talk more about, and I'm sure some of you have heard about this, one of the other ways that Up For Learning helped facilitate some adult student partnerships was creating three half-day retreats to welcome some UES and all of the RBS fourth graders to transition into MSMS. So we had one in March when it was still very, very wintry and cold and we were like huddled outside on a very icy playground, one in April, and then one in May where it was beautiful and kids were yelling and having a great time and really just getting to know each other really well. It was co-facilitated and co-designed by MSMS students. And we had all six Roxbury students come and we had six UES who were paired together and each of those paired had a MSMS ambassador, so it was a triad. So that way, we could form like an 18-person community and also they can create more personalized individual bonds with other folks. Next place. Oh, sorry, just before we get this picture, sorry, do you mind going back? This picture on the right here is actually the last day we had at MSMS and the fourth graders decided to make a tunnel. So it was a bunch of fourth graders making a tunnel for Julie Conrad, who if you know her, she's a pretty tall individual, so it was really just fun to watch her trying to navigate through this tunnel very skillfully, I might add. But it was a really wonderful way to end our retreat time together. Thank you for going back for that. So during these three half-days, we did a lot of community building, we saw each other's schools, we had UES students and MSMS students actually go visit Roxbury. It was the first time, I think, all but one of them have been there, so that in itself was really powerful, they were able to see Roxbury, what it looks like, the town. We also toured MSMS, we had student-led tours of MSMS, so middle schoolers toured with UES students while the Roxbury folks were meeting with Julie and the counselors, and then the UES folks helped to guide the Roxbury students. So it was sort of this tiered system where they could teach each other about the building and find all the gators that exist, they're plentiful there. They also got to meet each other's principals and got to meet Julie. They had some beautiful conversations around what is this transition going to look like? What are we excited about? What are we worried about? And it was just really wonderful to see the MSMS folks really lean into those conversations and help to, you know, knock away some of those unknowns and answer a lot of the questions that folks had. And we ate lunch together, we ate snacks together, we had some fantastic chocolate chip muffins. So that was really wonderful. In this work, we really dove into some of these questions around what values do we have as individuals? Based on those values, what type of community are we trying to build at MSMS? And how do we want to feel every day when we're at MSMS? Like when we walk into that building, when we walk into our classroom, how do we want to feel on a day-to-day basis? And based on that, did a really nice job, and they did a beautiful job, you know, as fourth graders doing this work, thinking about, so based on our values, what community we want, how we want to feel, what do we actually have to do on a day-to-day basis as individuals to build that community? And seeing that connection was just so powerful. So, that was our retreat. Oh, next place, thank you. Oh yeah, so this was one quote that we were lucky enough to have a caregiver share with us, just, you know, that difference between the first day at Roxbury when it was cold and icy and it was a little awkward and kids weren't really knowing each other and they were doing like the awkward get-to-know-you phase versus the last day on the playground when kids were dancing and giggling, and it was just really wonderful to have that experience with folks. Next place, thank you. The other main or more formal youth adult partnership that we had this year is some student-led professional development opportunities. So during our half-days, students facilitated five professional development sessions, really based around community and restorative practice and how we leverage RP to create more community. The first two were really focused on building a really strong sense of community wellness and digging into how does communication with teachers, between teachers, with students, between students, and what kind of communication we need to create a community that is well? And the second one was really around collaborative decision-making and why that's important for a solid community and what that looks like in a setting. Then, our third one was digging into how do we create a beloved community? We had a little bit bigger chunk of time for this one because it was on one of our in-service days, and just really thinking about the overarching view of restorative practices, what does that look like? And really digging into this idea of doing with rather than for or to, and what that looks like on a classroom-level practice. And then, one of the ones I was most excited about personally, I thought they did a great job designing this, was they created six micro labs for one of our half-day releases where teachers got to choose how they wanted to engage that day. The first one was interrupting bias and microaggressions. Second one was increasing engagement by understanding brain science, building a classroom community. They had one about restorative communication, really getting back and diving a little bit deeper into communication and wellness and how those two are inherently linked. One about exploring a restorative mindset, so rather than thinking about restorative practices, it's like specific strategies that you leverage, really think about how that becomes innately who you are as an educator and how that guides your practice. Again, beautiful job talking about this. And then, the last one on that day was deepening understanding of the benefits of doing with rather than for or to. Then our last one we just had this Friday was thinking about giving teachers the time and space to intentionally plan out how to close learning communities, right? And having students really think about and pair and partner with folks around what that looks like and how to support some students through a pretty big time of transition and excitement and nerves and more excitement. You know, this time of year can be up and down for a lot of folks, so how do we actually support students through that and intentionally say goodbye at the end of the year? We just had this great quote by a teacher, talking about how amazing they were doing, which was really wonderful, right? The first time, the first PD, you know, folks were standing up in front of the theater, in front of seventy-odd of their own educators, which was just really wonderful to see. Next place. This was additional training, I threw this in not because it was student-led or student partnership, but I think it's really foundational work that we have to do as a community of educators to really increase our ability to form partnerships. So forgive me, I hope this is okay, but you know, I really come from the lens, as the SCL person, that strong SCL skills lead to a really strong community and that leverages our ability to create authentic partnerships with students. So Joelle came in five times, also during those early release days, talked about teacher wellness, building community, talked about how do we teach SCL skills, how do we embed that in our instruction? And also talked about asset-based language and really talked specifically about how we talk about kids and how we talk about other people, impacts our sense of belonging, impacts our identity and who we are, and how do we, you know, talk about students in a way that's beneficial to adults and also very respectful and really asset-based? Then collaborative problem solving, you may have seen on Libby's blog if you've been looking, I'm really excited about this work. Our SCL professionals are doing this work, we did the Tier One Training, and this collaborative problem solving is really like Ross Green's Brain Child, some of you may be familiar with it, but it essentially gives teachers the framework and the tools to go into a hard conversation with a student who is having some sort of behavior challenge, behavior response, and get really at the root of the problem and really frame this as a problem that we're up against together, so how do we work on this together to move forward? And I just think it fits so smoothly into this idea of doing with and not for or to. So, you know, I think for us to move forward in youth adult partnerships, these just felt really foundational pieces for the adults in the building to do, so I wanted to include those. Next place.
Did you say Ross Green?
Yeah. MRPS Pi and some community partners have offered to do bystander intervention. Last Friday, they came in for a full day of training and we had 18 students who worked with them all day and learned how to be a bystander, what that means, and also developed curriculum so that next year they'll be going into the elementary schools and actually teaching how do we be a bystander, how do we safely interrupt things and incidents when it happen, and really what does that look like? So I'm really excited about that work for next year. We're also going to, of course, continue our partnership with Up For Learning because they've been really foundational to us, both with the retreats, the RBS, MSMS, UES retreat, and just that like really weekly leveraging of student voice and how do we embed that into our system? Next place. And then, last but not least, this is a very preview of Panorama, we'll talk about Panorama in much more depth in the future, but one of the things that I am really excited about with Panorama is it's a tool and a platform that we can use to survey students and get their, you know, their view and perspective of belonging, climate, and how they're doing on SCL skills. So my hope and real excitement about this is it's going to give us the data rather than folks and groups have to spend their time coming up with surveys and analyzing the data, we'll just have that data in the future and we'll be able to make really concrete data-based goals and see how our work is impacting student perspective based on how students are reporting that to us. So, excited about that. That's all I have for you.
Jess?
Questions for Jess? Just, let us know if you're...
I, I just want to observe, I've heard from community members with respect to the combining the fourth graders and including the middle school kids, and there was a Penn Pell aspect of that, and parents were thrilled, they thought it was excellent. So, I'm really grateful, that's been a big sort of concern, I think for all of us, it's come up a number of times, how to sort of bring those communities together, and it sounds like that's a really great structure that you have for combining and bringing the middle school kids to, it's pretty awesome.
Yeah, thank you, I'm really excited about it, and it certainly was a group of administrators, it's not just me that made it happen, but yeah, we've gotten great feedback, but thank you for sharing that. And it's continuing, just so everyone knows.
All right, Emma?
Oh, sorry.
I just had a que... Thank you so much, and it like, this presentation and the last presentation, it's just like really a nice way to sort of end out the school year and get some really positive feedback from, you know, boots on the ground, what's happening in the school, so I really appreciate it, it's great, great work that you're up to. I'm wondering about sort of the partnership with Up For Learning and where that stands from a budgetary standpoint, like was it funded through Essar Funding, and excuse my ignorance, but...
No, no, that's okay.
And will it, how many year, more years will it continue, or is it something that needs to be like put into the budget again?
Yeah, so it was funded through the MAC grant, which is sort of a wellness grant aimed at creating safety and belonging and increasing health of students. And, yeah, so I think that it is something that we have to reapply for every year, I think that there are a lot of competing priorities for that money as well.
Do you know how much the grant is for?
Not off the top of my head, but I did know a few weeks ago.
I also just wanted to say thank you, first of all, because this is like really incredible progress, I think. When we had the School Safety Committee that we did a few years ago, a lot of these things were things that people were asking for and things that in the research that we did indicated that they make a huge difference in a school community for the things that, like interrupting the things that are become, take, become real challenges for students, like punitive discipline or even to the extent of like the school-to-prison pipeline, this is the kind of work that, that keeps us, keeps us as a community and keeps individual kids who are struggling from going down paths like that. And so I just think that this is like amazing that we have such a foundation happening now. And, so thank you to you, and then for everyone else who's doing this, who's not here tonight.
Yeah, it's really a team, yes, yes, thank you though.
I really, I just wanted to say that. And then I also wanted to ask, from your perspective, like, this is a big effort, this is a lot of work, what tells us when it's like making the impact that we want it to make?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to talk too much in detail about Panorama, but that is something, that'll be a pretty strong tool. It does have surveys that are research-based that go out to students on a regular basis that talk about their perspectives in climate, in belonging, and can help track their SCL skills and how they change over time. So I'm, I think that that is going to really help us figure out what is the impact that this is happening. Because while anecdotes and wonderful emails from parents and feedback is fantastic and keep it coming, love it, thank you, also, right, we want to know that this is doing the real work and that we're interrupting the school-to-prison pipeline and keeping kids in our district and wrapping them even when they're having a hard time.
Yeah. So we would be looking at information from students to know what difference this is making, that's very helpful. And then, this also has a big impact on someone's ability to learn, right? The, how connected they feel to their classmates and to their school community, and we heard it from these three students who were here presenting earlier today, just like how important it is for them to have that class where they all feel like it's a, almost like a home base for them. Is there anything in the academic measurement that would help us, that we should, that we could look at to see this, this work that we're doing on the social, emotional learning side is having some sort of impact on academics, or is there not a way to connect those two through the data?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a great thing for Mike and I to continue to talk about, and we know the research says that when students have higher level of SCL skills, they can perform higher academically, right? So I think the assumption would be that we would see it in academia. So I think the assumption would be that we would see an academic data too.
Okay.
But that's my answer for now.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a great question.
Yeah.
Other questions for Jess?
I'll just add the resounding appreciation for this work. It's very dynamic and it's very complex, just listening to the sustainability program and like what a teacher has to, you know, all the plates that are spinning and then to be managing all these outside partnerships and really empowering students in these really meaningful ways that they're getting skills that will actually translate into real world, you know, workplace experiences, community kinds of experiences. It's just so inspiring. And it certainly makes me think about how it's changing students' perceptions about what school should be and what school should feel like for them and...
And teachers too.
And teachers too, absolutely. And I think, you know, like the teacher was saying, it's pretty scary up there some days. It can be really isolating. And to feel that you are now partnering, you know, with students in the work of learning just feels like, like this is where we should be going in education. And so I just really appreciate all of the time and energy and passion going in. It's very collaborative work. It's very dynamic. It's not, it's not meat and clean canned, you know, curriculum. So thank you to all of you. And yeah, that was just like a question that I had for our students is, you know, is this changing your perception of your role as a, as a learner, as a student? You know, is this changing your expectations of what school should be and should look like? Is it changing, you know, what you expect your relationship with your, with your teachers to be? So be interesting to hear, you know, candid student responses to those things. But it's, yeah, it's just really, really, really exciting work. So thank you for getting our kids out into the community and having real experiences. It makes them wanna come to school, so.
Yes, yeah, that's the important hope.
Thanks for this all around.
Yeah, I will extend that thank you to a lot of people as well.
Oh, and then, sorry, just one last thing, just to echo what Rhett was saying too about the RBS, UES, MSMS trifecta and folks coming together. You know, I know that was actually like a part of the merger agreement that I think, you know, the original writers of the merger doctrine, you know, had written in specifically about, you know, that there was kind of this missing piece around transition, both for UES students, you know, and now we have this new RBS component coming in and it just feels like that's really happening now in a very real way and it's being really leveraged. So thank you for getting that train on the track too.
Thanks. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, quickly. Um, yeah, I could continue to shower praise. It's amazing the work that you and others are doing, but I'm curious for my own personal learning. I do a lot of this type of work that you're describing, but with college-aged children, students, adults, whatever you wanna call them. Sometimes they're all three. The, the student-led trainings, that's absolutely amazing and I love it. I'm curious, the, how you select, how you engage the students in that? Is it the same students repeatedly? Yeah, I'm curious of that, that component. And then it seems, at least based on the quotes that you presented, that it's valued by the teachers, but I'm also, I'm curious to get a little deeper understanding of how the, how the, you feel the teachers are, are, yeah, valuing that.
Yeah, I think for your first question, there has been some variation around who's presenting and who's helping to facilitate and design those PD sessions. I will say they tend to be students who are already involved in the Up For Learning groups that happen. So that is certainly, as we were talking about, just getting a wider representation, that is certainly a grow area, I would say. You know, there has been variety and I think that we have work to do around that. I think teachers are really appreciative of the student-led stuff. And I think that there's always this tug between wanting to invite students in and doing that work with students and like being able to like be a human, you know, and be a teacher and be a human. And so I think that there's always gonna be that tension when we have youth adult partnerships and I think that's okay.
Yeah.
It's a great question.
Other questions? First of all, I'd also wanna echo this sentiment, it's just, you know, it's been great to, you know, see this work and get multiple presentations and see what good systems in place. And I know that, you know, the whole district is benefiting, so it's been a, it's been a great year and it's, it's been a great position. It's great to have you on board and I really appreciate all the, all the work and the progress and the trajectory of the progress.
Thank you. Can I go now? Is that okay?
I have to stick around.
Yeah, no, I was just looking to see if Beth was for the... So I believe Beth contacted me and said she is ready, so I'll just let her know that we're ready. And then I think we'll just go to breakout room, right?
Yeah.
Can we do that on a computer or is that probably the best?
Mm-hmm. And we should go to room 126?
Yeah.
I need her to be in the meeting, I think.
I know.
Before I create the breakout room. Or maybe Anna has to create it and send me and Beth to the...
No.
I might be able to though. Oh, Beth is here.
Okay, cool.
Hi Beth, welcome. Oh, here we go. She already went. She went to the break, so now bless you.
Hi, Gabe.
Now, oh, she can't see me. Hi!
All right, so we can go to room 126.
Hold please, we're all gonna move to another room.
Yes.
Be right back.
Yeah, and we are, so we're going, oh, we need a motion to go into executive session. And just, we're, we do have some business after the executive session, so...
So we will be coming back.
Yeah, we're trying to make it not too long and I know that Beth is under the weather, so I'm trying to make an overview for her too.
Mary, will Sac be joining us in this executive session?
Absolutely.
I move we enter executive session for reasons of personnel.
Okay, language.
For the purpose of conducting an exit interview with Roxbury Village School Principal, Beth Kellogg.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Great, we will be back soon.
Yes.
All right, so it looks like we are all here. Policy monitored, we have two policy monitoring reports to approve. Policy C3, transportation, and policy D5, animal dissection. Do I have a motion to approve the policy monitor reports?
I move to approve the two policy monitor reports.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have the first reading of two policies, one of which you just got. But again, we can keep reading these until we're comfortable, so let's just keep that as a first read. I don't know if Emma or Scott or Rhett, you had one of these too. Want to give any context?
I'd like to give a little context. So first of all, as a, as the policy, in the policy committee, we decided to move these two policies forward for a first read a little bit earlier than we normally would have. In the past, we've sort of waited until we feel pretty solid in our first draft to move it forward to a first read. But what we noticed is happening with the timing of the meetings, so the timing of when our policies go for first read and then when we meet as a policy committee to address the comments that were made in this meeting and then put those into action and revise the policy and then bring it back for a second read. The timing is just so, it takes so long to move through that process that we felt like it might be better just to like move it into first read, get initial feedback, and then it's still, still the process will take a while. But instead of waiting until we felt like super confident in the first draft of these policies. So we're sending you a couple of drafts. I'll let, I'll give Rhett the floor on title, the E1 policy. These are both newly required or relatively new required policies by, by the Vermont School Boards Association. So we don't have a choice, we need to adopt, adopt them. And typically, when we have a required policy from the VSPA, we don't do a lot of editing as per advisement from our legal staff. So, you know, we don't usually change much of them. The thing that's interesting about this E1 is that there were lots of sections that were highlighted by the VSPA for us to fill in the blanks. And so, and, and the concept being that we hold a process by which families that interact with Title I in our district are able to provide feedback on what those filled-in-blank spaces look like. So we know that we need to do something there with, which probably might not even happen until fall. I'm not sure exactly. Part of this first read was supposed to get Libby's feedback, but she's not here, so. So I'll hand it over to Rhett for E1. He was the one that worked on the drafting.
Do, do we, I mean, this is a lot to literally read.
I don't think we should. I think we should kind of give an overview of what we did.
So, yeah, so, you know, down to page seven, it be, it turns into policy adoption. That's where we stopped making edits. So it seemed like that would be where it becomes procedure, which would be where it's on the administrative teams at the different schools who are Title I schools. RBS, MSMS, and MHS are all Title I schools, UES is not. So, but I don't know if the, the School Board Association, I mean, I don't know that you, it seems like good practice, right? All of this community reach-out seems like, like positive stuff. So I don't know that we would wanna not include UES or whether we even have the capacity to include a school that's not a Title I school. But that's kind of why we wanted to bring it to the greater board, because this is a, what this is about is a lot of community outreach, which I think we do. It provides a framework that will potentially allow us to sort of consolidate our efforts under this framework, if that's sort of a good way to go. And then at, at the school level, I don't know what authority the board has to dictate what strategies the schools are gonna take on an individual basis. That's the main reason we wanted to bring it forward, because we have come to a stop and we need, we need to communicate with administrative, administrators. Because at this point, below page seven, you're talking about getting more and more focused and that, in terms of like this school is gonna do this thing. And that felt like further than certainly we wanted to go as a policy committee without greater input.
I will also add quickly that the bold, the text that's in bold, starting on page three, any section that's sort of bullet pointed and in bold, we borrowed language from another school district that had already adopted this policy to give us an idea of the types of things that schools are, are putting into these fills, fill-in-the-blank sections.
Go ahead.
One other piece for context. We currently have this policy. This is, this would be an update, so it's, we're not creating a new policy, we're, we're updating it based on the guidelines from the School Boards Association.
Yeah, like new laws have been enacted that have made different requirements. And so the, our old policy is really different from this one.
It's two pages.
What kind of feedback would be helpful to you all?
I mean, I think it's around how do we, how do we gather community input on this?
On the policy?
Yeah.
What should be written in this policy?
What do you imagine it would be, how, you know, and I think, you know, we probably need Libby to weigh in on that too. If anyone has any ideas of like, how would we capture feedback and create a process by which Title I, you know, families can be involved in creating the language of this I think that's the main feedback. Right, Rhett? What do you?
Yeah, I mean, the, on page two, it's highlighted, MRPS will develop with, with parents and family members of participating students, a written and parent/family engagement policy. So that was sort of one of our questions. How many readings can you have before we start to bring in, to have intentional meetings with families so that they can contribute their input to what this policy looks like? And is, and then at that point, do you adopt the policy? Or do you do it in reverse and sort of create a policy that's supposed to have parent and family engagement and then have it, just revise it? I don't, I just don't quite understand what comes first there.
Yeah, that's kind of the question that, that I understand. It's chicken or the egg, right? So the policy, which we already have, is outdated, so we need to update the policy. And the guy, the, the model policy has language in it that says that it's a participatory process. So do we like engage in that participatory process in the process of updating it with a currently outdated policy on the books? Or do we get a better, but still not quite perfect, policy on the books that says we're gonna be participatory when we haven't been? And then with the hopes that we are participatory going forward? That's the dilemma that we find ourselves in.
And I think we have been, you know? I mean, I think we've done all, we, we, and I think the schools, that's the other piece is like, what is, what, what, what sits with us? And how will that come out of our retreats this summer when we're talking about our engagement strategies and formalizing them so that we can repeat them? And then what is not in our hands? That's really up to administrators that need to establish relationships with families of children in those schools, students in those schools.
Have you checked in with Pietro yet on this question?
No.
I can understand the confusion. Cause as I was reading this, I was also confused. I couldn't tell if, in some places perhaps, the word "policy" actually should have been "plan," like a community engagement plan at the school level? Like it's kind of what you were just saying, Rhett. Is this, anyway, I'm, I'm just agreeing with you, so I'm not gonna really repeat what you all said. That said, to answer the question you've put before us, my vote? We're not really voting, but my two cents would be, I think it would make sense to conduct a short but meaningful process to get input from families that would inform this policy, rather than put this policy in place and then start engaging families. So that's how I would, that's how I would resolve the chicken and egg conundrum that we find ourselves in. But I also understand it's confusing.
I agree with that. I mean, I think the way that the policy is written, it would be sort of a violation of the spirit of the policy if we just moved forward and adopted it without having a process.
Yeah.
How many reads does a policy need to?
As many as we want.
As many as you want.
At least three, at least three, but we can go more than that.
So could it not be that in the process of going through those reads, we have the engagement with the community? So it's not a one before the other, rather we're building and updating this outdated policy with the engagement of those families and the policy effects?
I think we're gonna try to invite them in, cause I mean, like theoretically, it's out there for anyone to come in and talk about it.
Yeah, we would need to be more explicit.
But I don't think, there's a level of paying attention.
I think too, like our knowledge as individual board members of Title I and how it is implemented in the schools and how families interact with it is so limited that it does feel like it would be more appropriate for administrators or somebody else to be running that process or at least be a part of the process. So I think we need to probably, so I think reaching out to Pietro is a good idea, just to answer the initial question of, you know, the timing of the engagement and then also reaching out to Libby and others on the admin team to see what type of process they would envision and what then sort of like lead.
And we don't necessarily have to have this go to a second read at the very next board meeting too.
Right.
You could say, wait until you've gotten some family engagement before it comes for a second read.
Yeah.
Or we could just have a go. Cause I mean, the thing is like, I mean, like... Because I mean, the thing is, I mean, like technically, if it's on there for a read, it's, it keeps it on the agenda and people come and speak to it.
Ah, I see.
We can just say there are no updates.
Or I guess, as I was envisioning it in my head, and maybe didn't articulate it, is the read and the engagement are at the same time? So is that possible to have?
Yeah, definitely, because we can each, with read, we can take, we can take input and re-revised it. And get to the point where we feel we've had enough community engagement as a process of the reads. And again, we can, you know, we need three, but we can have more than three.
So Scott, are you imagining then that that would, that the family engagement would happen at a board meeting? Which is where the reads, where the reading happens?
I imagine that some engagement can occur at the time of a board meeting, but that not every family is going to be able to engage at that time. And so there may be multiple modes of engaging.
Yeah.
One of which being during a board meeting, during a read. Another might be, you know, 12 o'clock on a Tuesday.
And you also have to think about timing. I mean, people are, we have a few weeks left of school. Then people are going to switch into summer mode. Is this, you know, is this the best time to engage the community? Or will people be a little more focused come late August, early September?
Yeah, I mean, I'm wondering if we can have a plan for, you know, have a plan to engage the community end of August and, you know, put the plan in motion through September and sometime end of September, you know, October or whatever, a couple of community engagement efforts that are really focused on this policy essentially, before budget season.
I'll just offer that part of the equity audit is going to be intentional focus groups with different sectors of our community, perhaps. They, and those are going to happen in, starting in August into the fall. So perhaps we could like integrate these two things, which would be, I think, better for the families than asking them to come to two different meetings to talk about things that are going on broadly in the district around engagement. So anyway, certainly could dovetail. I think it would just be a matter of asking the firm that's doing the equity audit to incorporate a couple more questions probably into their focus groups.
Yep.
I don't know. It's worth finding out.
They're not necessarily unrelated either, right?
Exactly.
It's about how we're capturing like the voice and opinions of our community.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think figuring it out.
It doesn't feel disconnected.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think that's a great idea. And then also, you know, maybe doing some sort of survey that we can have all the principals send out. And creating like a little spot on our website for survey and feedback, too. Like, you know, either send out like a district-wide survey and then just have it be a kind of permanent link on the website at least for a few weeks where people can go to and...
And is that copacetic for you all in terms of like timing with VSBA? If it's a required policy, like does that, or is there any time? Okay.
I don't think there, usually with these required policies, I don't think there's like a date attached to like when you have to.
Yeah.
But it's just sort of best...
And I don't think it's like an emergency, emergency required policy, like if we don't have it or...
Yeah. And we're working in earnest.
So we do have.
Yeah.
We do have, it's just updated, exactly.
Okay, do you want to move on to the next one?
I just have one other overall piece of feedback, which is that it's very hard to read and it feels repetitive in places. And especially if we're thinking about non-board members and non-administrators reading this and wrapping their heads around it, i.e. caregivers and other members of our community. It seems like either we need some sort of like explainer or summary or something, or we have to, it's, there's got to be some way to streamline what it is we're trying to communicate.
There was an idea that exploded in the policy committee about a year ago that is kind of on the future work list that was like on our policy page where we have all of our policies listed. There could be like a layman's sort of like explanation of what the policy is. We've been trying to do that with the statements of intent.
Yeah, yeah.
A little bit, we're including a statement of intent in each policy. With, with these required policies, especially ones that are so bound to law, we've sort of been advised not to do a lot. So I think in that case, it could be a separate document that lives, but it can be linked even at the bottom of the policy to sort of explain the policy in a little bit more approachable terms.
Yeah.
One more quick thing to, to address what you were just saying. There are, there are sections in here where it specifically spells out the parent engagement piece. But it's not, the entire policy itself should be drafted. It's these, these different components. It starts on like page three, basically. And so, and so, yeah, I don't see it as a, here's the policy, let's, let's build it together. More, more along the lines of the details and those bullet points that we borrowed from wherever, Mississauga Valley. That's the piece where I think getting true engagement is going to be important.
Like, starting with part one, general requirements and expectations? Is that what you're, is that the part?
It's those bold bullet points that are throughout the document that start on page three.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I think part of it is be specific, but it does read repetitive.
Yeah.
But I think for a lot of different engagement points, we want a lot of the same things, too. Ready to move on to the next one?
Yes, I am just taking...
C13?
So, C13, I apologize that you didn't have access to that. I changed the permissions for the whole folder so that in the future, I hope that it won't be a problem. So again, this is a required policy. It's tied to law. We did actually another iteration of the policy committee when Ryan and Bridget were part of it. We had been working on this before they left. And so this statement of intent was written in conjunction with those two board members. And so we didn't have to do a lot of work on that. We didn't end up changing, I think, maybe anything once it says "policy" and then below that.
All of that is the required?
Correct. And so the statement of intent is that effort to make the policy language a little more approachable and for people, you know, maybe students who are reading it or families or caregivers who are reading it or community members, that they have that sort of introduction piece and make the, make the rest of the policy a little more approachable. We also want to center it in the values of the district and to make sure that we lead with the values. Like why are we adopting a policy like this? And so we had, we did change some of the language according to that. And we also have asked the Equity Committee to take a look at this policy and see if they might have a sentence or two to add to frame this policy in Equity.
Questions on the...
The only thing I had... Question about was, but I guess you already answered it because it was already, it was cut and paste. Is the definition for homelessness, Section B, it lists a trailer park? Which I feel like the common use of that is like a mobile home. Maybe they mean like a trailer, like you pull in behind a car, but it just seemed weird to see a trailer park in there.
Right, so that was a question that arose back when we had the legal mind of Bridget on the policy committee. And we were able to sort of, we ended up talking to the SBA about it. And, and then we did a little bit of work in the last policy committee, too, to do, to look up definitions and stuff. And so that was a question that arose, like we didn't want, you know... Basically, the short answer is that that term is more about an RV-type of park where it's very temporary living and not somebody who's living, you know, in a...
In a modular home.
Yeah, or, or something that has a foundation and they're planning to live there year-round and it's insulated and has heat.
Okay.
But we decided to keep the language as they wrote it because of Pietro's suggestion not to change language on these legally-bound policies.
Would it be possible to put an asterisk? And then at the bottom say, for these purposes, this is the definition of trailer park?
Yeah, I mean, so the definitions are...
If we can't change the words?
I don't know if you guys can see the comments. Can you see?
I can see your comments.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, the definitions are linked, but we could, you know, they're, they're in the law.
Yep. The other thing is if you, at the top, number one, a homeless student means lacking fixed, regular, inadequate nighttime residence, which could include. So if you're living in a modular home with a foundation and that is your fixed, regular, inadequate nighttime residence, then you're not, under this policy, considered homeless.
Right. So I feel like there's so many definitions in here that I'm not sure we need to pull that one out since they're all, they all can be found. All of the definitions can be found if you click out to the statute.
Yeah, and also there's kind of a, I mean, in some ways we want the flexibility to be a little overbroad. I mean, we don't want to, you know, stigmatize anything, but we also don't want someone who is in inadequate living situation to be excluded from this because we have a cramped-upped edition of the term. Any further questions on C13?
I think in particular, if you wanted to give a closer read to the statement of intent, and then at the next reading, if you have feedback on how that could be revised, that would be great. And we're hoping to have a couple sentences from the IP Committee in the next five minutes, or maybe the third, depending on meeting schedules. Thank you for doing the policy work, thanks.
Yeah.
Great. Yes, no, thank you, thank you, Emma, Scott, and Rhett for giving the overviews. The motion to adjourn is next, the motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Laws in favor?
Aye.
Let's do this.
And again, thank you Zach and Merritt for your fearless service and good luck with graduation. We will be seeing you in just a...